Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have roll call. Barley.
Sorry, here.
Connell.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Guy.
Here.
Gilligan.
Here.
Kreiser.
Here.
Putt.
Here.
At this time, we will hold election of a temporary president. So we'll accept nominations for temporary president.
Jeff.
Oh, I'd like to nominate Chris Connell.
No, no. You gotta wait.
Temporary president.
Get to your script.
I'm sorry. Where is my script? Where is that living right now? Sorry. My apologies.
Sent via email from Sue.
Sorry, was that out today? My apologies, guys. Yep, it was sent out today, sorry. Just getting to it now, sorry. My apologies. I'm sorry, I nominate Jim Kreiser.
We have a second.
For temporary president.
Second.
So we have a nomination for Jim Kreiser for temporary president, seconded by Susan Gilligan. If there are no other nominations, by proclamation, Jim Kreiser is elected temporary president.
Thank you all so much. I'm gonna bask in my splendor here for thirty-two seconds. As a temporary president, I would like to open the floor, though, for nominations for president.
And I'd like to nominate Chris Connell for president.
Is... Are there any other nominations for president at this time? If none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations for president?
I'll close. No.
Any second to close the most nominations?
Second.
Motion is carried to close nominations for president. We have a motion for Chris Connell for president. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Chris Connell, congratulations as the board president.
Thank you, Mr. Kreiser. So we'll move on to the next item, which is election of vice president. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I'll nominate Jeff Putt.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to close the nominations for vice president.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mr. Guy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kreiser. So motion carries and nominations for vice president is closed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And at this point, I'd like to announce Jeffrey Putt as our vice president.
You.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is election of treasurer. So I'd like to open the floor for nominations for treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Christine Fisher.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the nominations for treasurer.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Putt.
Second.
Second by Kreiser. Therefore, we will carry and close the nominations for treasurer. All those in favor of Christine Fisher for treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Christine Fisher is our treasurer. Congratulations, Christine.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, next item is election of assistant board secretary.
I'd like to nominate Susan Gilligan for assistant board secretary.
Hey, are there any other nominations for assistant board secretary? Hearing none. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to close nominations for assistant board secretary.
So moved. So moved.
Okay, moved by Kreiser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Putt. So we will close the nominations for assistant board secretary. Okay, all those in favor of Susan Gilligan being elected to the assistant board secretary, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. I would like to announce Susan Gilligan as the assistant board secretary. Congrats.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to announce officers whose term continues. So Darcy Brenner Smith as board secretary to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Next item on the agenda is appointments. The following appointments will be made. Palmyra Public Library, Larry Guy. Palmyra Area Recreation and Parks Commission, Jim Kreiser and Krista Barley. Cougar Foundation, Jim Kreiser. Lebanon County Legislative Region of PSBA and PSBA Representative Susan Gilligan. Wellness Committee, Jeffrey Putt. Next item on the agenda is elected to boards, and I'd like to announce the following board elections. Lebanon, I'm sorry, Lancaster Lebanon IU thirteen Board, Christine Fisher through June thirtieth, excuse me, twenty twenty-one. Lancaster Lebanon Joint Authority, Clarence Fox through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Lebanon County Career and Technology Center, Jeffrey Putt through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Christopher Connell, first alternate through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and Susan Gilligan, second alternate through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Next item is approval of board representatives. So at this time, approval of tax committee representative and alternative representatives will be determined at a later date once board vacancies are filled. Next item is approval of Solicitor Labor Special Education Council. So I'd like to entertain the motion for the following legal counsel. Robert Frankhauser from Barless Barley Snyder as Snyder, I'm sorry, as Solicitor. Brian Boland, Causeoff Stout Attorneys as Labor Counsel. Stock and Leader Attorneys at Laws for Special Education Council. And William Z. Esquire from Appelzost and Z. LLP. So I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Putt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kreiser. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, motion carries. I'm sorry, hearing none. Trying to breathe through this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is board committees. So I'd like to announce the following board committee assignments. Buildings and grounds, Jim Kreiser Chair, which meets on the second Thursday of the month. Finance, Christine Fisher Chair meets on the second Thursday of the month. Staffing and Administration, Larry Guy Chair, which meets on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month. And Curriculum, Jeffrey Putt Chair meets on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Just as a note, no meeting is held on the fourth Thursday of July. Okay, next item on the agenda is adjournment.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I have a a motion to adjourn by Mr. Putt, a second by Mr. Kreiser. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and we're adjourned. Okay, we'll move into our regular board meeting.
Mr. President, are we good to advance to the approval of treasurer's report?
Now, we have to open it up again. So I needed a drink of water real quick. I'd like to call to order the board meeting of the Palmyra Area School District for December third, two thousand and twenty. We've already done the pledge of allegiance, so we'll move on to roll call. Darcy?
Barley.
Here.
Connell.
Yes, here.
Fisher.
Here.
Guy.
Here.
Gilligan.
Here.
Kreiser.
Here.
Putt.
Still here.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Moved by Putt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gilligan. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our approval of treasurer's report. So I'll hand this over to Ms. Fisher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report for November of two thousand and twenty.
I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for November twenty twenty. Excuse me, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Putt. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is president's report, and I'd just like to announce that the board did meet on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty in executive session to discuss legal matters. Next item on the agenda is visitor comments. We do have one, two, three, four, five people scheduled to speak tonight. Again, as a reminder, you do have five minutes that you can use to to speak to the board this evening. I would just ask that, I will warn you at four minutes and thirty seconds that you're running out of time, and I'll ask you to stop at five minutes. So the first visitor comment we have on our agenda tonight is Shyla Hoffer. So Shyla, can you say hi?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Okay, Shyla, the floor is yours.
Great, great. I just wanted to address something that we were just made aware of with the new mask order for the winter sports. And I understand that swimming will be excused from that. And I would actually like to ask you guys to consider excusing wrestling from that as well. Some of you guys know our family, some of you might not, but our family is considered high-risk and personally, I'm very high-risk, and our family is very pro-mask. So this coming from me is a pretty big thing. However, I just wanted to just kind of shed some light on the actual sport of wrestling to help you guys see that it's not really a normal sport and wearing a mask during practices and during matches can actually pose a risk to the wrestler. Some, some of those things might be, when the face is covered, you kind of need to see the wrestler's face to see if they're getting enough oxygen or if they're getting choked out. The masks also, a lot of times, are made of elastic, which can pose a danger to the other wrestler. You can have broken fingers. It can be a strangulation risk. There are, there are just numerous reasons why I just would like you guys to really consider if that's something that could be lifted. Let's see, is there anything else? I just, I mean, I think that pretty much sums it up.
Okay, thank you. Shyla, I appreciate it. Okay, next visitor comment is Vance Hoffer. Vance, I know there's two people listed here, but will be, will two people be speaking? Or are you both gonna consume the five minutes that's allocated? Can we say Vance, can you say hi?
He's on his way. Sorry, I didn't expect it to move so quickly.
Okay.
Come here, hon. So this is, you're at the board meeting, okay?
I guess.
Explain to them some reasons why you think that.
Well, I was doing wrestling practice and it was all good at the start, and then at like fifteen minutes into the practice, I was already like out of breath and I could hardly take it. And I was the only one wearing a mask. Yeah, so the thing with Vance and Xavier is that they do both have asthma. So as far as getting a doctor's excuse or something like that, we could probably do that for them, but as far as the rest of the team, it's just, there are just a lot of risks that just come into play that might not come into play in other sports.
Right. Okay, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, Mr. Connell, do we, is there any opportunity for us to have Dr. Kepler make some comment on this? Would you like to wait? Because I think maybe it's the same topic for all of our speakers.
Yeah, it's the same topic, and I think because of the topics that were listed, I think Bernie and I, or Bernie or I and/or whatever, my, we'll, we'll do it at the end.
Okay.
Okay, Robin Stein, if you could say hi.
Chris, I'm not finding anybody with Stein or Robin. Oh wait, they just, they just showed up. Here they come.
Okay.
I just ask a question. He said that he was the only one wearing a mask. Are wrestlers supposed to be wearing a mask now or not? Are they all supposed to have masks on now, or are they not supposed to have that?
Today, today was the first day they were asked to make sure that they were wearing a mask.
Okay.
Hey, Robin, can you hear us and say hi?
Yes, hello.
Hello. Okay, Robin, you have five minutes. You have the floor. Robin?
I know I do during wrestling. It is something that is gonna be pulled on while having and for overheating and when they're breathing in it, and they're gonna be breathing heavy. And for breathing heavy and it being all for one child as much as any for overheating or K masks during wrestling, that, that just seems so much to ask when they are around each other and they, as children.
Hey, Robin, I, you're, I think the general consensus of your message is coming through, but unfortunately, you've broken up for the majority of the minute and fifteen seconds you've, you've had so far. Are you there? Okay, I think we'll move on. We're looking for Rob Gordon. Rob, can you say hi?
Can you hear me now?
Got you now, Rob.
Coming through, good.
Yep.
Awesome, guys. I really appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak. You know, I have a wrestler myself, and of course, as we said, this is what's on the agenda, and there's been a very ever-changing world that we're living in, and I know that athletics as a whole are kind of even coming into question as we kind of pause till December eighth. So this is a very, you know, very volatile situation, always changing and always developing. I think the one thing that I really just want to talk about and really get across and come to a consensus as a group is to understand, as we say, wrestlers cannot wear masks. I mean, I think that we saw this, you know, quite honestly, I work in the opportunity to see the PIAA state championships with soccer and football, and because of all the exertion in these sports and because of this activity, it really is just impossible to quite honestly, wear a mask and think that these kids are gonna be safe. And really, what I come from is a angle of the idea, my son is only in fifth grade, he's a young kid, and I've had the opportunity for the past five years to assist and coach him while he was involved in the wrestling program. And quite honestly, it's amazing what kind of strength and stability that gives to them in their lives. And currently, right now, with everything as crazy as it is, I think that it's important that we kind of give these kids. And I think that honestly, I had the opportunity to write a letter to, you know, Mr. Kepler. And I think that, you know, Palmyra has been doing an amazing job as, as far as what we've been doing for these kids to keep them in school and keep them engaged and have them going and, and really just kind of doing the best we can to get through this situation. So I think that really what I want to kind of understand is that I felt like there was a time when they did decide that like, we understand you can't wear a mask when you wrestle. And if we're gonna have these sports and have wrestling and, and do swimming and, and quite honestly, argue like on the basketball court, I mean, this isn't even isolated to just this sport. The exertion and effort that you put into sports and activity like this, this mask really hinders it. And understanding that where I'm talking about is in the lowest-risk category of these young children that quite honestly, I deal with a lot of K through six. And it is truly amazing to see the amount of people that are children that are wanting to get involved with wrestling that are five, six, seven years old. And I think this is kind of an interesting time for them in their lives. I think that as long as we can keep, continue giving back to them and have opportunities for them to have some sort of normalcy in what is a crazy hectic world that we're living in, I think that we should give them that opportunity. And like I said, it really is as simple as just understanding that, you know, when we wrestle, we can't wear a mask. And that's just the simplest statement of it all. I'm really looking forward to understanding and hearing your comments at the end of our conversation here to really understand your perspective, because you know, it seemed like, you know, we had a decision to get winter sports going. We had a decision to say, you know what, you really can't wear a mask when you wrestle. And then all of a sudden, it came back around and say, well, no, we think we actually are gonna wear a mask. So I just, you know, just really want to understand where the logic and the practicality is in that. You know, and really seeing that, you know, when you talk on the governor's website, there's even specific language, you know, referenced in Article Three that really goes through and reviews about the fact that if you have these dangers and have these things, then you shouldn't be wearing that mask. So it seems like, you know, there's really no science behind it, but you know, just a matter of just being common sense that, you know, obviously, when you're doing this kind of activity, you can't wear the mask. You know, and I truly appreciate your time. I think you understand where we're coming from. And that's where I think that we were just really look to understand where you guys are coming from so that we can be on the same page and really do the best thing we can for our children. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Okay, next person is Mandy Brayden. Mandy, would you say hi, please?
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, you have the floor.
All right. Hi, yes, my name is Mandy Brayden. I'm a mother of four students in the Palmyra Area School District, and I'm just following up on this topic that everyone else has been addressing with the board tonight due to my concerns over the recent implementation of the requirement of face coverings during this type of strenuous physical activity. I really believe it's unhealthy and it poses a greater risk to our students than it does a benefit. I did send an email to Dr. Kepler last evening as well, explaining some of my concerns with this, but I just really wish to also address them tonight with the board. I'm concerned that the new practice will cause harm to our students now and possibly for the long term beyond the current physical side effects, the safety concerns and the health risks that were addressed. We don't know what are the possible longer-term physical or mental health effects of requiring our students to do this. Unfortunately, no one is able to answer that at this point. This type of face covering requirement has never before been implemented or studied to this degree that it would make me feel comfortable allowing my children to participate in a sport or gym class with a face covering while being active. My children have already complained of headaches during the normal course of the school day when they're wearing their face coverings and they're not engaged in physical and hard physical activity. And I also have one child who has begun experiencing asthma-type symptoms during different times within his gym class. And I would just ask that we not experiment on our children. They have been brave, courageous, and highly adaptable to meet all the new regulations we have thrown at them up until this point. I would just ask that we stand with our children and students to protect their health, safety, and well-being, which I believe that has been the goal of Palmyra and the educators all along. And I would strongly urge the board to reconsider this decision to require face coverings during strenuous physical activity. I also would like to say that I agree with Mr. Gordon that the school has done an amazing job. My children are in-person instruction as much as possible, and they absolutely love being able to be in-person. So we just want to also thank the district for that. Thank you.
All right, Chris, Bernie, I don't
Thank you.
I think it's important. I empathize deeply, and I took our administration to task, and I think some statement, and as I talked to you earlier today, Bernie, we've got to get a communication out. This was not a board decision. This is not a decision that we've made. This is nothing that the board has done from a local perspective. So I think some communication out here on this, as I mentioned earlier today, Bernie, we've got to get something out here to these folks to understand. So it's not our choice. Nobody on this board made this choice. Nobody on this board or in our administration pushed for this. So I'm not, I'm concerned that that's the message that's out there, number one. But number two, I think we've got to do our part to get a communication out there and make sure people really understand the context and backdrop and where this is coming from, which is not from us.
So do you want to address the why, Bernie, here?
Certainly, certainly. No, I'll be happy to start, Mr. Connell. And first of all, say, you know, several of the emails I've received from parents of wrestlers asked me to forward emails to the board. I want to ensure you that I've done that. And for full transparency to the board, I probably received forty-plus emails from different parents regarding this concern. I echo the sentiments of the families that spoke tonight. I was a wrestler for eleven years. I don't know how you wrestle with a mask on. That's me personally speaking. Frankly, I agree with Mr. Gordon. I don't know how a basketball player runs up and down a court throughout a contest with a mask on. What I, what I, well, I would say to Mr. Kreiser's comment, agreed, we did send out one communication, which has obviously caused this level of concern. We, we will follow that up to help clarify for our families. If the, what I'm hearing, I believe I can speak for all seven board members that we have here tonight, that they and this administration are more than happy to have our student athletes participate without masks if we can. This is not something we want to force upon our student athletes, but we must make sure we adhere to the order. And there is, there is what some believe clarity in the governor's statement and frequently asked questions. But frankly, we believe, and many of us in the education world believe it's far from clear and presents some of us in a unique spot. To give our families on tonight a perspective, District Three is in the midst of a survey. And to my knowledge, of the first seventeen respondents, sixteen maintain the position that we do, with us being one of the sixteen. As I'm told. In fact, we're hearing schools saying if student athletes, you know, a basketball team shows up and is not gonna wear masks, there are schools that aren't going to play because they don't have masks on. because they don't have masks on and vice versa, or won't go to a school where masks aren't going to be worn. I believe we need to slow-play this and gain more clarity over the next days and weeks. Our first competition, I believe, is not until the eighteenth of December in the district of what I looked at as survey today. If we can get clarity and move off of this topic and allow our athletes to compete without a mask, more than happy to do that. Frankly, two wrestlers on a mat, if one of them's COVID positive, I don't care if they have a mask on or not. I'm not a doctor. Something tells me they're both going to be positive shortly thereafter. So I don't know that it's going to help the athletes on a mat. I hope that provides some level of clarity. We are working on it. I've sent email correspondence to executive level leadership at the Department of Ed, hoping to get access to some clarification from the Department of Health as well. So I guess, please, for the parents out there, my message is, please know we're working on it and seeing if we can gain greater clarity. The big piece is.
Bernie, can you rephrase the thing? That since our last board meeting, the directive from the governor and from the state agencies that oversee our fundings and subsidies have amended and revised their language and requirements?
I think it's important.
Doesn't seem to me that folks really understand that it's not a Palmyra Area School District Board vote or choice.
I, and I think to that point, Jim, right? We went from everything being a local decision to a non-local decision, right? And so a lot of the decision process, the luxury of having the decision process that we had prior to Monday doesn't, we don't have that luxury anymore. And Bernie, if you want to go into the nice document that we have to sign every week and the ramifications of not following it.
Yes, on a weekly basis, effective this past Monday, Mr. Connell is board president and myself is superintendent, must sign and submit an attestation form that is submitted to the Department of Education. If we don't sign that form, schools must automatically go to full remote learning and all extracurriculars are to cease. If we sign that form, which we did on November thirtieth, we're committing to adhere to the requirements in the order. In that timeframe, our solicitor is recommending at this time that we work to wear masks during athletics. Again, so that just leaves us where we're trying to get further answers and clarification. So from a legal perspective, we don't put the school district or anyone involved at risk. Because if we're told we're not following the order, not only would athletics shut down, but our schools would be shut down, which is the last thing we want. So I guess in closing for me, I'm just, I'm asking for the patience of our, of our winter athletes and their families as we're working through this and trying to get further clarity each and every day.
And I think I just typically don't like to speak on behalf of the board, but I don't think there's a board member here that doesn't agree with any of the visitor comments that were made this evening. I would certainly recommend, I think we're going to push on our side. Dr. Kepler is certainly going to push through his channels to make sure the understanding we have is crisp and clear and really to make some of the, lack of a better term, nonsense decisions that are before us to kind of change into more practical ones. With that said, though, I would highly encourage the passion to continue to your state legislature or any other contacts you have that could influence the Department of Health or our governor. Certainly take advantage to write a letter, make a phone call, and really voice your opinion in this manner as well. This way, you know, your voice is heard as well, and it kind of puts that decision process back into the local school district so that, you know, we can, we can figure out pretty much for ourselves what's good and what's bad for our students in our community.
And Mr. Connell, I would add that any parent that has their, their son or daughter's pediatrician provide us with a medical exemption, that takes care of things for their child right away. So if our families that have that opportunity or feel there's that need, and their physician will provide that exemption, please do so.
Okay, any other discussion on the mask and sport topic? Okay, so we'll move on to curriculum. Mr. Putt. You're on mute.
I am killing it tonight.
I guess one last thing, Jeff, I apologize. Bernie, I know we're real busy, but is there an opportunity for us to work in the week or so coming up to get a follow-up communication out to families so they're more aware of the order itself, the Section Three that's being referenced, the different things that are in there, so they really understand where this is coming from. It's not, we made a decision and we're requiring it, and they can see all of the different avenues, the different exemptions that the order allows for, and if their family or student athlete may fit into any of those categories or not. I know it's difficult to expect to get that, you know, right now, but in the coming week, if we can work on getting something out, I think that'd be helpful to those families.
Certainly. No, that's something that's, we can shoot for, I'll attempt to get that out tomorrow. That shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you very much.
Good. No, no worries. Very good. Okay, so the curriculum meeting last met on the nineteenth of November. We discussed the outdoor updates, and Wally Popejoy and Michelle Waiter provided the board with an update on the middle school outdoor education program. Darcy Brenner-Sprith presented the outdoor education budget for the 2020-2021 school year, setting the maximum student rate at $130. Darrell Resinger provided the board with an overview of the high school course catalog for 2021-2022 in preparation of a motion tonight at the board meeting in just a few moments. Dr. Spagnolo provided the board with an update to the 2021 winter keystone exams. There were no public comments, and the meeting adjourned at 7:46. And from that meeting, I'd like to make the following motion that we approve the 2021-2022 high school course catalog.
I have a motion to approve the 2021-22 high school course catalog. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The next curriculum meeting will be held at the district boardroom on, where is it? Sorry, I'm killing it tonight, man. I am really killing it tonight. Do you have it up? I'm sorry, December seventeenth. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Mr. Putt. We'll move on to staffing and administration, Mr. Guy.
Okay, thank you. The staffing and administration met on November nineteenth, 2020. The board had the second reading of policy 203, 203.1, and 210. There was no public comment, and the meeting adjourned at nine forty-nine PM. From this meeting, we have the following motions to act on. Motion to approve the second reading of the following board policies, policy 203, 203.1, and 210.
I have a motion to approve the second reading of the following board policies, policy 203, 203 dot one, and 210. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Putt. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, a motion to approve staffing and administration committee items is noted in the staffing and administration consent agenda, and Dr. Kepler, would you like to make some comments?
Certainly. If I can pull the agenda up for you, Mr. Guy, but I apologize. There we go.
Always nice to see big print.
Yes. The agenda before you this evening has short-term substitute, high school health and physical education, and Mackenzie Lesh. Additional time there for shadowing. Support staff hire, special education autistic support aide, that is an asterisk, that did, you have not seen that one previously. But again, with autistic support, I need to get somebody started as soon as possible in that position. Some additional substitute teachers that you'll see there. Again, new folks that haven't, a couple of them went through committee, others not, in dire need of certified teachers for substitutes. A volunteer coach hire, from middle school wrestling, a strength coach, highly qualified. You would have seen a bio sent to you on that on Jill. Happy to have her around that program. And then a motion to approve special sick leave for following employees and with the accompanying dates.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve staffing and administration committee items as noted on the staffing and administration consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gilligan. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, resolution. I hereby move that the Board of School Directors of the Palmyra Area School District authorize the superintendent and business manager to continue to pay hourly nonessential employees at their regular rate of pay for up to ten workdays, which may or may not be consecutive, for which an employee does not report to work due to school closure. Layoff status will begin on the eleventh day.
So I have a resolution that the Board of School Directors of the Palmyra Area School District authorize the superintendent and business manager to continue to pay hourly nonessential employees at the regular rate of pay for up to ten working days, which may or may not be consecutive, for which an employee does not report to work due to a school closure. Layoff status will begin on the eleventh day. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Putt. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Darcy, Bernie, do you want to add anything to this?
Unlike closure, the closure last year, where we did have specific legislative action to continue to pay employees if, during the school closure, we have not, nothing like that has been enacted this year. And we already, you know, are aware that we're building closures have begun. So this allows us, we need board action to pay any days that are not worked. So it allows us, this allows us to do that. And just add that in. Upon enacting this, whoops, sorry, I want my light. We will be in touch with support staff and the support staff union to provide more details about how that will work.
So this goes, goes a little bit of distance here to, to protect the school district and also the employees for these school closures and you know, it's, it's one of those, I think, difficult things. If we have schools closed and if they close for a long period of time, this helps making difficult decisions a little bit easier and gives some people some relief in the interim, so.
Mr. Connell, I would add too, that, you know, as we look, you know, in our experience at Pine Street Elementary this week with our first closure is a large majority of our hourly employees are still needed in the workplace. So many of our, you know, paraprofessionals are working with a small group of students. They're continuing to do that in an online format. So I want to give comfort to a large majority of those folks that, you know, their services are valued to all of them, but many of them will still be needed even in an online format. Okay.
What I, what I would just ask is, I know we say many, but those that won't be doing anything, I hear quite often how taxed and overwhelmed everyone is. I'd like to make sure we have a list of projects, priorities, activities that we as a board can see and understand and start discussing how, why, if, or why not in these closures, these other staff that don't fall into the many are still doing whatever. The others that aren't in the many, why we would not be deploying them onto those other priorities and activities, or if there's some reason we can't do such per support staff contracts or otherwise. I would like to know that we're just not having people on the sideline when we're talking about everybody else being overwhelmed, and we're not deploying those people in some fashion to help out. So rather than saying many, I'd prefer if we said all of them were still doing.
And that's the case at Pine Street. Every employee is reported, and we've needed them at work this week at Pine Street Elementary. If that puts a context to it, absolutely. We, we can't afford to lose employees. Because if we lose them to layoff, we may never get them back. So absolutely, we're striving to keep folks employed, and we do have needs.
Yeah, and those conversations have been taking place. Just an example, among the Buildings and Grounds Department of lining up some projects that, you know, help, our Buildings and Grounds staff have been doing a tremendous job, but they've taken on all kinds of extra cleaning. So, so there are projects there that can be assigned. So we are thinking along those lines as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. One second, I lost my mouse. Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, resolution has passed.
Next meeting of staffing and administration will be on December third, following the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guy. Next item on the agenda is board applicants. So as many of the applicants know, of course, we've had two board vacancies in the from a couple of weeks now. So we'll be looking at appointing two people to fill those two empty seats. So I want to thank everybody who applied and sent in a resume. Very, very high-quality pool of applicants, I will say, and some people's resumes are rather impressive, so I appreciate everybody taking the time and the dedication to pull that together for yourself, send that in. Greatly appreciated, and I'm sure the rest of the board appreciates it as well. The way this will work is a board member will have an opportunity to nominate somebody. And as they nominate the person, you'll need to get a second, and if you get a second, then we can open it up for a vote. Whether we have one or thirteen people move on to the next, the next round, that's fine. Either way it works, either way it turns out is the way it's going to work. But if we move to more than two people being nominated, then those people will move on to next Thursday, and we'll have a little bit more of a formal interview with those people, and then appoint the people after that meeting. With that said, any questions on how this will work? With that said, any questions on how this will work? Okay, Darcy, are you?
I'll be keeping track of the motions and the seconds.
Okay, and then as we, as we nominate and mo, and I'm sorry, as we make the motion and get the second for a person to move on to the next round, they require at least five votes, okay? So at least five board members have to say yes in order to move on to the next round. Okay. Larry?
Yes, I, first of all, having spent the afternoon reading the resumes of all the people, they're outstanding. And I'm so pleased to see so many of our, our people willing to serve. The difficulty I have is the fact we're in the middle of this pandemic crisis. We have a teacher contract to deal with, we have all kinds of financial issues to deal with. And it, it generally takes a year to bring new board members up to speed. And when I took a look at the, the names and the resumes, it was obvious, at least to me, that there, there were a couple of individuals who I felt really could help us out because of their experience. And, you know, starting with the, the first one would be Bev Hudson. She's a former board member. And she has a lot of experience. She was a big help when she was on the board. So I'd like to start off, because we have to do it one at a time by nominating her.
Okay, so Mr. Guy has nominated Beverly Hudson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. So how will work this, Darcy, is you can almost do a roll call, right? If, if you want to vote for the person, just say yes. If you don't, you don't have to say no, you could just be silent, we'll move on to the next one. Does that sound like a plan?
Okay.
Okay, just because virtually it's hard to see what everybody's doing. All right, so why don't, why don't we just start at the top of the, the the board list? So Krista would go first.
So I'm supposed to say yea or nay?
Yeah, yep. Just say yes, or if you want to say no, you can say no. If you don't want to say anything, then we assume that you don't, you don't agree with the nominee.
Okay, I don't want to say anything.
Okay.
Connell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Gilligan? Kreiser? Putt?
Yes.
How many did you get, Darcy?
I have four.
Okay. All right, so you need five to move to the next round. Okay, is there a second nomination? Another nomination, I should say.
I'd like to nominate Seth Anderson.
Okay, so we have a motion for Seth Anderson. Is there a second? Okay, there is no second, so we'll move on to the next nomination.
I'd like to nominate Britta Thompson.
Okay, so Britta Thompson is nominated by Krista. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a a nomination that's second, so we'll put that to a vote.
Okay, Farley?
Uh, yes.
Connell? Fisher? Guy? Gilligan?
Yes.
Kreiser? Putt?
Okay, so that nominee did not meet the five as well. Oh, for three. Let's try again. Anybody else have a nomination?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to follow Larry, Mr. Guy's comments, and I'd like to nominate Greg Krikorian.
Okay, so I have Greg Krikorian nominated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Guy. Okay, Darcy.
Okay, Farley? Connell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Gilligan? Kreiser?
Yes.
Putt?
Yes.
Okay, so if I counted correctly, Darcy, I think that's five. Okay, so Greg will move on to the next round.
I'd like to nominate Ryan Patrick.
Hey, I have a nomination for Ryan Patrick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Jim. So we'll put that to vote.
Okay, Farley? Connell? Fisher?
Yes.
Guy? Gilligan? Kreiser?
Yes.
Putt?
Yes.
How many did you have, Darcy?
Three.
Okay, so that did not go through. Okay, others?
Mr. Connell, are we allowed to revisit any? I had mute on, on my computer, I think, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's, you can always bring up somebody again to.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll nominate Bev Hudson if that didn't go through.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have Bev, Bev Hudson nominated again with a second. We can put that to vote.
Okay, Farley? Connell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Gilligan? Kreiser?
Without my mute on this time, yes.
Putt?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if I counted correctly, Darcy, I have five, correct? Okay, so Bev Hudson would move on to the next round. Next nomination?
I'd like to nominate Kim Gressinger.
Okay, I have a nomination for Kim Gressinger. Do I have a second? No second? Okay. Kim didn't get the second. Any other nominations?
Or not, sorry, Mike Kovall.
Can you speak up, Jim?
I don't have mute on. Can you, can you hear me?
No, we did, but it was muffled. It was a bit.
Sorry, I, Mike Kovall?
Okay.
So I have a nomination for Mike Kovall. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Gilligan?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so we'll put that to a vote.
Okay, Farley?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Guy? Gilligan?
Yes.
Kreiser?
Yes.
Putt?
Yes.
Uh, if I counted correctly, Darcy, six. So Mike Kovall moves to the next round. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Franco Lozso.
Yes. Okay, so we have a nomination for Franco. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a, a second for Franco.
And that was Gilligan? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, I didn't see.
Chris, Krista made the second.
Oh, then I, I'm sorry, I didn't get who, who made the motion.
Gilligan did.
So.
Okay, got it backwards. Okay. Uh, Farley?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Fisher? Guy? Gilligan?
Yes.
Kreiser? Putt?
Okay, my count says three, Darcy? Okay, so Franco does not move on. Any other nominations?
I also nominate Ryan Butcher.
Okay, I have a nomination for Ryan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Krista.
Okay, Farley?
Yeah.
Connell? Fisher? Guy? Gilligan?
Yes.
Kreiser? Putt?
Two, correct? Okay, any other nominations? So far I have three people. Correct me if I'm wrong, Darcy, I have Bev Hudson, Mike Kovall, and Greg Krikorian moving on. Any other nominations? Okay, last call. Any other nominations? Okay, so the way this will work is we have three people that will move on to the next round. We will have a semi-formal interview session next week. I'm sorry, on the 17th. Wish it was next week, but on the 17th of December, and then we'll appoint two of the three to the open seats we have. Okay, last call for nominations. Okay, we'll close the nominations. And again, thank you to all those that sent in your resumes and again, very, very happy we had so many people apply and much appreciated and thank you much for your time. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is communications. So we have the communications that we see here, Bernie?
Yes, Mr. Connell, thank you. Tasked for you is correspondence from the Four Diamonds letter detailing the efforts of our middle school and high school students. The document, there we go. So at the middle school, $44,415.08 tremendous effort from our families, community at large, and middle school students.
Impressive.
Correspondence, absolutely. Correspondence to the board on high school Four Diamonds, $33,315.08. So again, the same kudos to all involved there and our staff that lead those efforts. The IU 13 submitted correspondence. Thanking the district. This year they're sending a letter. As in years past, they typically have a luncheon for their business partners and school districts that work together to provide job training services for many of our students with special needs that get out into community and learn job skills for life beyond Palmyra Area High School. With COVID last spring, they were unable to have that. So they wanted to share with the districts and us, with you, the board, appreciation for our partnership with local businesses to make those efforts happen. And then finally, today, one specific individual, community member asked to make sure, excuse me, at the same time my light shut off, make sure that his board, his letter regarding masks was into, read into the minutes tonight. So we have it here in the communications section for you. So a letter from Mr. Jones. So that is there for you to read in, in full.
Thank you, Dr. Kepler. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. So at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Moved by Putt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kreiser. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and we're adjourned. Okay, we'll move into our committee meetings from this point. And first committee meeting up is Buildings and Grounds.
Do you want to give your speech? If anybody wants to raise their hand and offer a comment. Now's the time to do so. Before we get to item one on the agenda, you need to raise your hand. I, I do want to take the opportunity just to give everybody a chance to raise their hand if they so choose. I, I, you know, Darcy mentioned it earlier, but our maintenance staff, our Buildings and Grounds crew, and our field staff, what they've been doing is just phenomenal, phenomenal work. I am incredibly proud of their efforts. They don't get nearly the recognition, they don't often get seen by the students or the parents or the families, as teachers and other staff get to. But they truly are some unsung heroes of helping us weather through things and all that they're being asked to do with the cleaning requirements and everything else. So just a big shout out to them for, for just an awesome job, Heath and, and Kim and the crew, just doing a great job. So I just want to make sure to offer my thanks to all of them.
All right, so since we had no content with that committee meeting, we'll move on to our next committee meeting, which is I think Finance, right?
Okay, and Finance, looking at the audit report. Darcy, was that something you wanted to take a look at?
Yes, I'll, I'll take you through that. In, in past years, we've had Boyer and Ritter, our district auditor, make some presentations. This year, we did forego that in the interest of time with what, what was on our plate with board vacancies. So I'll just fill in for them and take you through the documents you have there. The first document is a communication letter from the auditors, goes over, you know, how the audit was conducted. There's some pieces in there. If there were any disagreements or any issues that they ran into as they were conducting that audit, those would be noted there. And that was not the case. They also include a GASB statements, things that are coming up that would affect how are the accounting and our financial statements. Their pronouncements from the Government Accounting Standards Board, they, they're required to tell us of some of those pronouncements that are coming up in future years. And then the next document are actually the audited financial statements that we will, what we look for is the next board meeting, a motion to accept these, and then we do post them on the district website. But the highlights are, first off, that we did have a clean audit opinion, which is which is the highest level of opinion that you can receive on the financial statements, that they're stated fairly. The, that's the first page, and then there's a section, we usually direct you to take a look at pages four through twenty-one. That's the MDNA, or the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And that's just, I prepare that as part of the financial statements. There's a lot of technical information in the footnotes, and what we try to do in that MDNA is put that into layman's terms and give you some information about the financial highlights and status of the district. So that would be something we recommend that you would read. Important key data that we always like to report is our unassigned fund balance. That's something we watch very closely, and it's very much a part of our budget planning and discussions. And last year, when we estimated where the district's fund balance would come in, we estimated it that it would be three million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, six oh one. You can see there where it came in, and actual was three million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four thirty-seven. So that was within four thousand dollars. Don't ever, I don't, would not expect that we would normally be that close. And that's six point three percent of the total general fund expenditures. Our board policy is that we will keep our unassigned fund balance being between four to eight percent. That's very important to maintaining bond ratings and, and helps us, has helped us in the past significantly benefit from low rates for all of our financing. So that's six point three percent, again, right in the middle of our board policy, where we need to be of four to eight percent. Then, I'm not going to go through anything else in the financial statements, the, the, all those statements are there. At the end, there are some reports, also our Boyer and Ritter. Also, they audit our federal programs, so there are two reports at the, in the very back of the statements, where they report on our internal controls, and they also report on our compliance for federal programs, and there were no findings reported, and so that's, again, important to highlight. And they, every year, they look at, they have to test a different program, and they, this year, they tested the National School Lunch Program as part of their audit of the federal programs. Those are the comments I had prepared, I just want to give my heartfelt thanks to the business office staff, and especially Tanya White, Assistant Director of Affairs. Her, under her leadership, a lot, you know, it doesn't make us very popular in the business office staff, a lot of the things we do to enforce the things that give us a clean opinion, making sure we have proper documentation, authorization for all transactions. But, but you know, those things are taken very seriously by our business office staff, and I, I am very appreciative that, of the, the staff that we have, that they do take that so seriously.
So great job, Darcy and Tanya, right, on, on enforcing those controls and making sure we, we get these clean opinions. I'm, actually, it's kind of funny, tonight I'm starting my twelfth year on the board, and all eleven years previously were always great audits. So thank you very much for your hard work and dedication in that area, making sure that the school district is sound by the state level and also by the federal level, so good job.
Okay. Thank. Oh, sorry.
That's okay, I was just gonna say we'll move on to public comment, and I don't have anybody that raised their hands, so we'll move on to staffing and administration.
Great.
And again, I, I forgot to say this the last time, but if you have any questions rega- regarding the items discussed in the committee item, just be sure to use the Zoom capability to raise your hand before we get to that public comment section. Okay?
Okay, Dr. Kepler, you want to take care of the early dismissal dates for the.
Thank you, Mr. Guy, I'm happy to. Last month, the board approved three additional early dismissal days in the months of January and February. Those are months that are heavy on short weeks, so we only did three. Before you would be my recommendation for March, April, May. Again, teaching in a pandemic, this is keeping our teacher, helping keep our teachers heads above water, knowing that they're providing online resources, preparing those scanning items, uploading them to either Schoology or Google Classroom is immense, coupled with the, the loss of time, because they're monitoring students at times where in a regular schedule, they're not. These are the Fridays that I would recommend we look at. However, I, I place in there about the, giving administration the approval to reconsider that if we're in a long-term, full, remote, we might be able to do things differently, just with regular schedules that allow that, if everybody's at home, or, or where they would be if schools are closed, we might be able to do some things a little differently with schedule too that allows. So recommending two additional dates in March, three in April, and four in May.
And these would, would only be if, if absolutely needed, correct?
Well, I think if, if we would be open, we would be continuing to, we would look to utilize these. If we're closed, for some reason, we wouldn't. But yeah, so we could always reconsider if the board has a desire to change the motion for vote, instead of reconsider if in full remote, or if you want us to have full authority to reconsider along the way, I would be happy with that as well. All right, the feedback we've received from teachers has been significant, significantly positive. And again, I think the key here is we've been able to provide coverage for families who don't otherwise have it. And to me, that's the most instrumental piece of this entire puzzle.
Right.
Bernie, we approved all the way through February by these dates, I'm guessing?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, I thought we did last time, but I couldn't remember.
Yes. I have, I have no problem with this, Bernie. You know, I, I, I think it, it certainly serves a, a good purpose and, and gives our staff time to, to get materials out to those that are at home and, and prepare lessons and things like that for the following week. So I'm, I'm all for this. I do like the fact that, you know, we have a, a piece in here, if we go fully remote, that, you know, that doesn't mean that this applies. The, the only thing, Bernie, I, I would say is just make sure you have the, the authority to, to say we don't need it anymore. And if we don't need it, if things change, who knows what's going to happen, but I guess we can all kind of predict. But if things start changing in, in April, then, and we don't need them, we certainly don't want to keep them in place.
Certainly.
And I would just say, I mean, I'd echo all of that, Mr. Connell, I mean, I think we did this on a trial basis. You know, I had some concerns about childcare for families and impacts. You know, but I think to Dr. Kepler's point, the teacher feedback has been overwhelming. I consulted with my good friend, Mr. Guy, who has more of a finger on the pulse of that than I think the rest of us do, and, and he's echoed that sentiment. And quite honestly, I, I haven't really heard, and I shouldn't say it that way, I have not heard any negative reaction from families in the community of any hardship or issue with those half-days. So, you know, I think for us to keep going two, three weeks at a time, and just continuing to revote, revote, and revote, if we think this is a model that's working, let's put it in place, create the normalcy and consistency for families. You know, then I think it's worse for them not to know two, three weeks at a time, is it going to be a half-day, is it, is it not every time the board meets? So let's just put it in place, given the success that we feel we're having with it.
Great. And Bernie, we had, when we did this back, back a while ago now, we had set up, so if any parents did have any hardships, that their kids could still come to school, or stay in school in this case. Have people been taking advantage of that?
Absolutely, we've, we've ranged, roughly speaking, anywhere from eight to eighteen students in an elementary school with families taking us up on that option.
Okay.
So after, in the afternoon, those eight or eighteen students per school have stayed monitored by our aides to do their asynchronous work, and then picked up by parents at the end of the day.
Okay, and that's going to continue, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I'm good, anybody else? Okay. Next item, and thank you, Mr. Guy, next item is public comment, and I don't have anybody that raised their hands. So with that said, that's our last open committee item we have on the agenda, so we'll move into our executive session. Board members, five minutes, okay? Or do you need a little bit more or less, five minutes? Okay, so we'll, we'll circle back here at seven twenty-nine. Okay, don't be late.